My name is Addie Roman Lara and I'm here with my sister Serenity Roman Lara. And we want to welcome you to the Goshen City Council meeting today. It's August 25th, 2025. Thank you all for helping make Goshen a great place to live, learn, and have fun. Now let's all stand together and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Okay, you can go sit with your mom now. All right, could we get a big round of applause for Addie and Serenity? Thank you. That brings us to the first item on our agenda, which is our roll call. Could the Clerk Treasurer please call the roll?
Counselor Gerber.
Here.
Counselor Ledrock.
Here.
Counselor Nisley.
Here.
Counselor Peel.
Here.
Counselor Rick Hickor.
Here.
Counselor Schrock.
Here.
Counsel President Weddle.
Here.
Youth Advisor Reyes.
Here.
Okay, we don't have any minutes to approve, but we will move on to the approval of our meeting agenda. Questions, comments, or a motion from the council? Yes?
There's an added item. It's Ordinance 5232, having to do with the Water Works Bond.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Nisley and a second from Peel. We'll put that right before our hearing for the wheel tax. We'll make that.
So it'll become number five.
It will become five. Yes, that is correct. Okay. The first item on our agenda is a series of presentations. So Chief Powell, you could come forward.
All right, so we have two presentations for life-saving awards. Our staff is very humble and they did not want to be here. They think it is part of their job. So I did pull some national statistics. And in a cardiac event where you go to the hospital, there's a 10% chance that you will come out of the hospital, walk out of the hospital, and not have neurological deficits. So I just want them and everyone else to know that this is very significant. So our first presentation, could I have Division Chief Michael Hamby come up here, please? All right. So just a summary of the events. On the morning of June 26, 2025, at approximately 9:10 a.m., Division Chief Michael Hamby, while off duty at his residence on Patricia Church Drive, heard a call for help in his neighborhood. Without hesitation, Chief Hamby immediately responded and discovered a man lying on the ground in full cardiac arrest. Assessing the situation with speed and clarity, he initiated life-saving chest compressions and began CPR with no equipment or support crew at his side. Thanks to his prompt and decisive actions, by the time EMS arrived, the patient was transported to the hospital with a pulse and direct result of Chief Hamby's intervention. This remarkable act of service was witnessed by neighbors, including Jason Gore, Division Chief of Operations for Alcar Fire Department, who personally commended Hamby for his actions and later submitted a letter of praise. Chief Gore stated, "Hamby's actions this morning saved the man's life. I am very grateful for Michael Hamby, and if he is to receive a recognition, I would love to attend." Chief Gore is in the audience tonight. Support for Chief Hamby's heroism was further echoed by Battalion Chief Ken Miller of Clay Fire Territory, who is also in the audience tonight. Battalion Chief Miller stated, "This act exemplifies the highest standards of courage, professionalism, and commitment to public service. Chief Hamby's quick thinking, training, and unwavering dedication to safety of others are a testament to the values we uphold." In closing, Chief Hamby's actions on the day demonstrate that it truly, what it truly means to serve, whether on duty or not, is a shining example of courage, skill, selflessness that define the Goshen Fire Department. His quick response saved a life and strengthened the bond between our department and community we are sworn to protect. It is with my honor to present Chief Hamby with the Life Saving Award for his extraordinary actions that went above and beyond the call of duty. We also have Mr. Arthur Rulie and his wife here tonight, who is the gentleman that was lying in his front yard. So if you could come up here and help present this award.
I am so grateful for Michael, for what he's done for me. He's gave me extra time to be with my family and to appreciate each day as we go on. Thank you to Jason, too, also, as he kind of was in on it a little bit, too. I'm just ever so grateful. And even, I want to say, this was kind of a shocking experience for Mike. Because while he was bringing me around, I have a defibrillator and it got him, too. So. Sorry, my bad. But I've been blessed, and we are blessed in our neighborhood to have these young ones in our neighborhood. They keep us all safe, respond to anything that happens, even when they're at home. Relaxing.
You all stand with me and acknowledge Mike together. Thank you. Hold on, we'll get a photo real quick. Thank you. It's a lot of good news.
Our next life-saving award is cardiac arrest that our personnel went on in the city of Goshen. This dates back to 2023. And we also have the gentleman here tonight that they responded to the call on. On the evening of February 1st, 2023, Goshen medic to 9:21 and 9:61 were dispatched to a residence in Goshen for a report of a patient in cardiac arrest. The patient, a 67-year-old male, had collapsed suddenly in his home. His wife and family were present and already had initiated CPR with the assistance of a GPD officer. Upon entering the scene, the Goshen Fire Department crew took over care immediately and began highly coordinated resuscitation efforts. The patient had no carotid pulse and showed signs of agonal respirations. What followed was an exceptional display of teamwork and professionalism. Manual and mechanical CPR were administered promptly. Multiple defibrillations were performed to address ventricular fibrillation. Advanced airway management was initiated, including successful innovation under difficult conditions. Medications, including fentanyl, lidocaine, and atominate, were administered to support resuscitation and patient comfort. A 12-lead ECG, spinal immobilization restriction, oxygen therapy were also conducted with precision and care. After five minutes of intense effort, the crew successfully achieved return of spontaneous circulation. The patient's condition stabilized enough for safe transport, and he arrived at Goshen Hospital with improved vital signs and intact neurological status. These actions not only exemplify technical excellence and calm under pressure, but more importantly, they reflect the compassion, courage, and commitment of our paramedics and EMTs bring to work every single day. Because of their swift and heroic response, a life was saved. A family was given another day with their loved one. So it is my honor, on behalf of Goshen Fire Department, to present life-saving awards to the following. If you would please come up here. Paramedic Hannah Estes, she was the lead provider on the scene. Paramedic Jonathan Weisup, who was the driver and provided IV therapy. Paramedic Shane McCurci, who provided the advanced airway management medication administration. EMT Jordan Hunter, who provided oxygen support and mechanical CPR assistance. Paramedic Jared Herb, who is critical support in patient care and education. Paramedic Jared Herb, who is critical support in patient care and education. If we could have Mike Davis, please come up. So Mike was the gentleman that they provided the care for.
I want to say thank you to the Goshen Fire Department. One other person, my daughter. Can't be here tonight, she's in college. Excuse me. But what I understand from Shane, they were there in three minutes from Central. I believe I'm right. Goshen has one of the best departments in the area.
Could you all stand and join me in honoring these men and women? Get a quick photo with you. Just want to thank all the first responders for making time tonight. Now, while you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the discussion that we have before us, if you want to take just a minute, we'll pause and give you an opportunity to head out the door, if that's your plan for the evening. But on behalf of the city of Goshen, just thank you for all the work that you do every single day without fanfare and recognition. We genuinely appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the presentation of the financial report from the Clerk Treasurer's office.
Clerk Treasurer Richard Agiri. Our Superior Deputy Clerk Treasurer Jeffrey Weaver had family obligations and could not join us tonight. But he left us in good hands with a report that shows overall, not just overall, things are going very well in terms of our finances for the current budget year. As we've had the same pattern over the last few months, we're getting in what we should be getting in. We are spending what we need to be spending. And we're actually running a little bit better because of a few factors that I can mention. This is a time of year, though, when the budget will start to take, there'll be some dramatic changes in that there'll be category transfers. There'll be things moving out quickly out of our accounts. For example, Red Hawk Academy is just getting going. So there are going to be a lot of expenses going out of those accounts for the fire department. If you would like to see a department that's just like right on where it should be, it's the cemetery's department. They're just doing about exactly as they should do for this time of year. There have been some turnover in the city. And as you know, one in my office is coming. So the Clerk Treasurer's Office, CRC Budget, a few others, we're going to have a little bit more than we're used to later in the year until, unless positions are filled. We also have that same situation where if you see something with debt service that's negative, it's because we get two levies. We've got one in June, which is the bigger one. We'll get another one in December. So there's nothing to be alarmed at when you see a negative number there. There's also one for redevelopment, because we haven't gotten everything in there that we're supposed to. For example, for East Goshen College Avenue from Brinkley. The revenues reflect higher cash balances, but of course, those will go down. And again, we've spent what we should be spending. And some departments spent a little bit less than normal. We have about $22 million in our general fund. We have $23 million in the TIF for the southeast. And of course, we also have funds in our budgets for Cherry Creek. So that's a quick summary of where we're at. And fortunately, things are going very well. So there's nothing really remarkable about this report.
Okay, councilors, questions or comments for the Clerk Treasurer? Do we have a motion to affirm the report as presented?
Motion to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Counsel Weddle. We have a second from Counsel Ledrock. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? And that report is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we will go on to additional business. The next item on our agenda is Ordinance 5231. Counsel President Weddle, can you introduce that item?
With the Clerk Treasurer, please read Ordinance 5231 by title only.
Ordinance 5231, amend Ordinance 3011 by Resonian Real Estate here and after described from commercial B1 District to residential R3 District. And this is for development of a two-story apartment building with 24 units located at 1423 Lincoln Way East.
I move for the passage of Ordinance 5231 on first reading.
Second, we have a motion from Weddle and a second from Peel. Okay. And we have a presentation.
Goshen Plan Commission met on August 19th in regular session and considered this rezoning request from commercial B1 District to residential R3 District for development of a two-story apartment building with 24 units at 1423 Lincoln Way East. This was forwarded to the Goshen Common Council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of five to one. The recommendation is based on the following. The rezoning is consistent with existing zoning and mixed land use in the area, and the requirements of the R3 District are able to be met. And just to note, this is a developed site that has been used for office use. So it has a building and a parking lot, which will essentially stay the same. Prior to the Plan Commission meeting, we received one phone call asking for more information. And at the Plan Commission meeting, there were several questions about landscaping and barriers planned along the south property line adjacent to Meadows of College Green, and several questions about the type of management plan for the apartments.
Thank you. Ms. Yoder, there are a number of people in the audience who may be unfamiliar with you. Could you just state your name and your relationship to this project?
I'm Rhonda Yoder, city planner.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a question for Rhonda.
Yes.
Go ahead, I'll go.
So you mentioned those questions concerning landscaping and barriers and whatnot. Was there any responses or answers to those concerns of the residents?
Well, there is partial landscaping required for R3 District adjacent to single-family or two-family residential. So that will be required along the south property line and also along a portion of the east property line. So that, that will be part of the site and landscape plans that need to be approved, need to be submitted for review if this is approved.
Could you explain to me what partial landscaping entails, please?
Partial landscaping is a mix of coniferous and shrubs. And the zoning ordinance has a specific formula for the number of trees and shrubs based on the length of the property line.
Thank you.
Rhonda, do you know, is the developer going to tear the existing building down?
No, it's going to, the existing building will be reused.
Okay.
And rehabbed.
Okay. Does anyone hear from the developer? I wouldn't mind hearing from them about what their plans might be.
If you could, please sign in and then state your name for the council.
Print your name for the Clerk Treasurer, please.
Yes.
My name's Terry Lang with the Whitman Office. Our address is 1402 Mishwaka Avenue in South Bend. Represented the petitioner here.
Welcome.
Thank you. As Rhonda had indicated, we're taking an existing office building that was previously the Commodore Office. Building was built in the, I want to say, early 60s. Good structurally. Commodore had decided to move to a new location. In 2021, View Rail had their office in there for four years, and then they decided to move on. And hence, the developer that I'm working with, DJ SJ, has purchased the property. They did an evaluation of the existing building. It has good, strong bones to it. And so basically, they're going to be taking offices and converting those into apartments. Some will be studios, some will be single bedrooms, some might be two bedrooms. The site itself has an existing parking lot. In the past, the Commodore site, when they were there, employed between 50 and 75 people most of the time while they were there on site. With this, we are proposing 24 apartments. So I'm anticipating somewhere between probably 36, maybe 40 cars there at any one time. The developer was concerned with traffic impact to the area. We contacted Endot, sent them a copy of our plan, what the building previously had been used, the intended number of new apartments there, and the intended possible vehicles, each, you know, to and from the apartments on a daily basis. Endot had responded back that they had no desire to have any input on this because it was a decrease in the number of vehicles that were, had currently been using the site for what is being proposed now in the future. They had indicated that in the future, there's plans for doing work along Lincoln Way down through there, but couldn't go into any details at this point because it's so far down the road, it hasn't been developed yet plan-wise. As Rhonda had indicated, we fully intend to comply with the zoning ordinance with regards to landscaping, maybe a combination of landscaping and fencing. If we do decide to do fencing, we'll have to get a variance, Rhonda had indicated, for that. Some of the questions that were presented at the Planning Commission meeting by some of the residents that came to that was there's a lot of foot traffic going from the other R3 apartments that are located north and west of our site, kind of going through the neighborhoods down through there and making a shortcut down to the commercial centers to the south, the Martins, and further down toward the Walmart area down there. We had indicated that, you know, we're going to develop our site within the guidelines of the zoning ordinance. I can't do any development on anybody else's property. And at this point, what you see out there right now, the existing parking lot will probably be shortened up just a little bit to provide extra landscaping that we're talking about there. The building will completely, inside will be converted to the apartments. Outside, it will be given a new facade. Creative Solutions has provided some renderings of that that were part of the package through the zoning process with Rhonda. Their intent is to, the entire outside of the building will be, have a new facade to it, and there'll be a few balconies on some of the apartments to give it a nice new look to it. Have a new facade to it and there'll be a few balconies on some of the apartments to give it a nice new look to it. Brick facade changes to it that will give it a really nice, good curb appeal. Will comply with the sign ordinance, will probably have a sign located. Near the Shasta Drive corner right there where people can identify, you know, where the property is located, the entrance coming into it. There will only be the one entrance coming in off of Shasta Drive to serve the apartments right there. And the existing retention areas out there are currently working in terrific shape. We're going to be providing the necessary drainage calculations for the engineering department so that they can evaluate that it is in fact. Working, it holds the capacity necessary for the design standards for the city of of Goshen. So we're going to work with the planning staff, the engineering staff for their request of what they're looking for. We have existing sewer and water on site, so it's nothing that we're going to have to extend at any great length to the site. As in some projects that you see being developed at this point in time. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have with regards to that.
Thank you.
These apartments, these apartments, do you think they'll be market rate apartment?
At market rate or even maybe a tad bit higher.
Is the developer located in Goshen?
Developer lives halfway between Goshen and Elkhart. He is a local businessman, has a reputation for building and design work. So you're not dealing with an out of town developer that is from Chicago or Los Angeles or New York. It is a local Elkhart County resident that is putting this project together.
And should this pass this evening, what would your estimated timeline be?
Construction will begin probably right away. They've been doing some cleanup work on site. There was a lot of trees that had been damaged through storms and stuff like that. But I would anticipate it to begin right away. I know there's a demand for residential housing. In the area right there and and with the R three zoning to the north and west of the site. We have a hotel, which is a residential type use immediately north. You know, those are items that are currently in the area, so we're not doing anything that's not already in the area right there.
Thank you.
Once construction starts, do you have a rough estimate on the timeline, how long that would take?
That I don't know. A lot of it's going to be getting materials more than anything else. You'll probably see. The building needs a roof, so you'll probably see that'll be the very first thing that's being done on that to get it protected.
How long is the developer own the property?
He acquired it at the beginning of the year here.
So I was gonna say, I mean, it it's in disrepair. The building itself looks like it and just it it's overgrown.
Yeah, and that's what Sue DeCey saw it too. That was one of his concerns.
I I've been contacted by a number of people with some concerns and I think they were. Concerns that were expressed at the planning commission, which I wasn't at. And you kind of alluded to those as far as fencing and whatnot, and obviously that would require variances and whatnot. And certainly I agree, you can't go onto someone's personal property to put fences up, but. If if that is a major concern of that neighborhood, and I understand because the the apartment complex that's immediately north. They've had a lot of issues with people just walking through private property. Are you willing to commit to those neighbors that should you be able to get a variance that you would be open to fencing? To prevent people from crossing across private.
We'll fence our property, but we're not going to.
Okay.
Put the expense of.
No.
Somebody else's.
I agree hundred percent, but you're willing.
Yes.
Variance wise.
Yes.
If that passes to put fencing on your property. Okay.
Variance is only needed if they do a fence only and not partial landscaping. They can do a fence and landscaping together.
Thank you.
It's if the fence is requested in place of the partial landscaping that they would require variance.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Rhonda.
I think I think it's important to acknowledge that when Park thirty-three was being built, there was a lot of. Neighbors in that residential area concerned about people walking through and it, I have gotten both. People saying this, this has happened, it continues to happen. But some people that contacted me were were okay with that. They would just wish that there was perhaps a designated trail. That they could go on instead of going through personal property. So. I I commend you for wanting to maybe put up a fence to stop that. I think that that's a possibility while I don't think everybody in that area. Thinks that a fence is needed. I think if you're willing to do that, then that would definitely help. And maybe, you know, work with some of the neighbors to figure out how to. Maybe direct traffic so that they are not walking through personal property and private property for the other areas like at Park thirty-three, but. I'm a little concerned that they're going to be higher than market rate. So what? What type of amenities would perhaps make these higher than market rate?
At this point, we're developing those amenities at this point. This is the very first step is getting the parcel rezoned appropriately for that. We're talking maybe pickleball, things that would be, we're not going to probably put a pool in or anything that would be. An amenity that creates more noise in a neighborhood type thing, but it would be things that. Question came up, is is there going to be a pet friendly apartment? You know, maybe we'll put in a. A dog run for people to take their dog out and have a little bark park for them to go out and do their business. Amenities that attract people. I know I lived in an apartment for a while and the bark park was an amenity that I think everybody enjoyed. Because I would say 50% or more of the people in the apartments that I was at had a dog. So it was something that. So those are the type of amenities that we're thinking about at this point, yes.
Thank you. Great. Any other questions before we? Move to the audience? Thank you for being here and answering questions. Are there any comments or questions from the audience before we move back to the council for their vote on first reading? You could print and state your name, please. And affirm that you are from the city of Goshen.
James Lowen here in Goshen. I was prompted to come up here just the discussion about fences and access and such. A few years ago, I lived for about eighteen months in that Park thirty-three complex and I was delighted to have a really lovely apartment there and. Since have moved away at the, at one of the edge of that Park thirty-three, there was a, there was kind of this funny little. Spot and maybe this where where one could actually walk sort of kind of very briefly trespassing. To get access to a street and then from there you could walk over to the Martin's store and it's like, wow, this is great. I didn't do it very much. I probably used that a handful of times in the eighteen months I. Lived there. But I'm, and I appreciate very much homeowners' concerns about. Privacy and don't, you know, don't go trespassing. I have a house. I don't really like it when people are walking through my yard. I'm just advocating as city planners are thinking about. Making Goshen a place that's great for homeowners, property owners, residents, cars, as well as pedestrians and people who use bicycles. Let's, you know, keep in mind, and I don't know the specifics of it and how the geometry of this layout would work or. Let's keep in mind that sometimes you do want to facilitate a cut through and if there's a way to do that, that makes it. Agreeable to the property owners, that's something to keep in mind as well. So that's my thought.
Thank you, James. Anybody else that wishes to speak to this issue before we move back to the council for vote? Welcome. If you could print your name. And then. State your name for the council and just affirm that you are indeed from the city of Goshen.
I think we should also just let everyone know that we do have a three minute.
Yes.
Time cap and.
Thank you.
Very.
Welcome.
My name is Deborah Fath and I live in the Meadows fifteen eleven Garland Drive, Goshen, Indiana. And my question I have for the developer is 24 units, that building is not that big. Especially if they're going to be charging 1,500 to $2,000 per unit. I used to work at La Casa as a financial counselor and a homeownership counselor. And so I'm wondering. What kind of an apartment, how, what's the square footage? For that building and how are they going to divide it up into 24 units and still consider having an amenity and maybe a pickleball or? And I know some of the past history with that building is they have had some mold issues in the basement. They've had some air quality issues in the basement. I worked with a man who used to work there and in trying to help resolve some of that. And then my other question or comment is. That I am aware that one of the residents in our neighborhood in the Meadows. Is having a dispute about where the property line is. And. I think the developer has already come in and threatened to pull out his trees and his bushes. And without even things being settled about where that line is. Because when this resident bought that property seven years ago, he was told the trees were his. And then this developer has been coming in over the last week with his equipment, saying he's going to rip out all that stuff. And so there's a bit of tension there. They had trouble finding stakes. We don't know if they've even found the stakes in the ground yet. So I know the surveyor. I just want to make sure they find those stakes and that the landowner sees that as well as the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments and your thoughts on that. Anybody else who wishes to speak to this issue before we move back to the council? Counselors, any additional questions before we move forward with the vote?
I'm interested in hearing, oh, go ahead, Matt.
For the developer, was there any studies done or anything? Support that you can actually. Have apartments available that are higher than. Market rate? Studies done to see if you can.
That's what they did before they started this project was does done their marketing analysis for what the market rate is and. What could be a little bit above that? We're not looking to be, you know, at entry level. I think with that location, close to the amenities of the park across the street right there. It it's the location speaks for itself for what they're going to be asking for. To answer the question, we have been out on the site, done a survey out there and located property corners and those property corner locations have been marked out there. So that property owners are on notice of where that property line is down through there. As we go through the process, if they're going to be doing fencing or landscaping, those lines will be remarked to make sure all of those improvements are in on their property. We're not going to be tearing something out on somebody else's property. And I can't vouch for what somebody said that those trees were. Realtors at times say, oh, your property goes back to the trees back there. That's how vague that. Generic term is used with where the property line is at. So we have done the survey out there on site or very much aware of it. One of the things that one of the residents had mentioned it was with regards to the mold. The entire site is going to be cleaned up and brought into today's terms. They've evaluated the the structural portion of the building and. It is suitable for the demolition of the inside and to create the apartments on on the inside. Within that guideline and we'll work with the building department and all their requirements that they need to have to meet code.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there another question?
Well, that addressed, I wanted to know how you responded to Ms. Fath's questions and you just.
Which was her question?
Well, about the mold. And also she asked questions about the square footage.
Square footage, the configuration of the apartments is in the beginning stages right now. This is the very first thing. My guess is you'll probably be looking for somewhere between 700 to 1,000 square feet, depending upon the number, if it's. Individual bedroom or two bedroom, that type of a thing. Pardon?
So if you want to ask a question, you would need to stand up and and or we can bring a microphone to you. State your name and you can, you can ask that question. But we ask that you address all questions to the council.
I'll just go and make it easy for her. Do you have a rough estimate on what you might be charging for these?
Let me inquire.
Yeah. And it may be too soon to get that information, but.
Yeah, I mean, this is a very preliminary phase, so we just want to make sure we're.
Won't hold you to anything.
You're going to quote me?
No.
He's indicating that from their initial market analysis, it's going to be about $1,500 a month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right. Thank you. Counselors. Mr. Malone, we'll give you another shot. Come on down.
Mr. Malone, two oh two Yorktown Drive, Goshen, Indiana. It appears to me for for property of this size, 24 units. I'd have some more detailed plans when I'm coming to the city council as far as how many square feet do I have to work with? How big are the units going to be? And it sounds like sort of a gray area here. There's no real answers. That's just to be all planned. I also think that. The the border, the fence or the shrubbery should be a definite plan, should be definitely full layout of what goes where and when it's going to be there. I think the thing should be tabled. I don't say it should be turned down, it should be tabled until appropriate answers are answered. And the full plan is presented to you because it's awful vague when I see it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Ms. Yoder, would you just try to clarify for everyone's understanding what phase of the process we are in and what we are actually deciding tonight?
So this is a rezoning and it's a straight rezoning just to go from one district to another. They would not have had to submit any plans at all for that. And as my staff report said, this is not site plan review. But they have provided a site plan. They have provided some elevations. They've provided some initial information, but that is not required. Basically, all they need to demonstrate is that they are able to meet the R three requirements and that. So that they have the capacity to do what the R three district requires. So so they do not need for a straight rezoning. It doesn't require a lot of information.
So there will be plenty of opportunity for the community to see what this is actually going to look like, to hear more details as this develops. This developer has just happened to go above and beyond. They're just asking for a rezoning. They've provided us with the conceptual idea of what they're looking at, but there will be lots more opportunity for public input and this will.
I don't know that there will be more opportunity for public input. If they meet all the requirements, they're basically going to submit plans to the city for administrative review and we will review them. If there's something that doesn't meet the requirements, then it would possibly come back to the public, but. Basically, it's going to be our job as staff to confirm that they meet all the requirements and like he said, drainage. Utilities, building codes, fire codes, zoning, so all of that is part of our administrative review and so. If this gets approved, then they will submit the detailed plans for review to show that they meet all those requirements.
Thank you.
I think something that's important to. To. To talk about here is they're not asking us for money. They're just asking us to rezone the area. So unlike say Cherry Creek or Aerial Cycle Works or. Places like that that are wanting TIF dollars where they would have to come to us with with site plans and PUDs and things like that. That's not the case here, so they are funding this on their own. And so. Yes, it's frustrating that we wouldn't be able to see that or have this conversation in the public. After this, but. It's also nice to have people coming to the table with their own funding to do a project, so. Especially right now.
I I agree with Councilwoman Peel. It's like. We start getting into specifics and what it's going to cost them and what the rent is and that those are all business decisions that we really. I mean, we can't. There's nothing we can talk about. I mean, we talked about it, but there's nothing we can do about it tonight. We're just looking at rezoning it. I went out there and drove through and looked at it and, you know, you got the apartments down the road, I think. And my grandkids went, I think the hotel's next door, isn't it? Yeah, okay. And then there was a daycare in the back and. It looked like, it looked like some of the light houses that we're fixing up. You know, it's it's disheveled kind of there, the shrubberies. You know, overgrown and and if if somebody's going to come in and wants to fix this up, I think it'll just. Be the best, best thing for Goshen anyway, so. We'll leave it up to the staff to make sure that they get everything else done. we'll leave it up to the staff to make sure that they get everything else done when the time comes in regards to fencing, shrubbery. All those other requirements that will make all the neighbors happy. So I'm I'm content with what we've heard so far tonight.
Thank you. Councillors, are you prepared to move forward with the vote this time?
It's like it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Is there anyone opposed?
Real roll call.
Okay.
Please, clerk treasurer, roll call.
Councillor Gerber?
Yes.
Councillor Ledrock?
Yes.
Councillor Nisley?
No.
Councillor Peal?
Yes.
Councillor Rexhager?
Yes.
Councillor Schrock?
Yes.
Councillor Weddle?
Yes.
Councillor Rais?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes six to one, but we do not have unanimous consent.
Mrs. Yoder will tell uh, tell you that for rezoning, we don't need unanimous consent. Is that correct? I beat you to it. Do we want to vote tonight or do we want to hold it over? Is there any reason to hold it over?
We do not have, I'm sorry, I missed it. I looked.
We do not need to have unanimous consent.
Okay, would you like to vote again?
Is anyone objectable since everyone's here tonight?
I see no objection. All right, can we uh, call the roll for the second reading? I'm sorry, you need to introduce the.
With the clerk treasurer, please read ordinance fifty-two thirty-one by title only.
Ordinance fifty-two thirty-one, amend ordinance for thirty-eleven by rezoning real estate here and after described from commercial B one district to residential R three district.
I move the passage of ordinance fifty-two thirty-one on second and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Weddle and a second from Peal. Any additional comments, questions or discussion before we move forward with the second vote? Okay, any additional questions or comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, we'll move back to the council for a vote. With the clerk treasurer, please call the roll for a roll call vote.
Councillor Gerber?
Yes.
Councillor Ledrock?
Yes.
Councillor Nisley?
No.
Councillor Peal?
Yes.
Councillor Rexhager?
Yes.
Councillor Schrock?
Yes.
Councillor Weddle?
Yes.
Youth Advisor Rais?
Yes.
That passes six to one with an af- an extra affirmation from uh, Youth Advisor Rais. Okay, uh, next on our agenda, we have resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve. Council President Weddle, can you introduce that item?
With the clerk treasurer, please read resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve by title only.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, contract with the Indiana Department of Transportation for street sweeping services.
I move for the passage of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
Second.
We have a motion from Weddle and a second from Nisley. Were you planning on making any kind of comments about this? This is a pretty straightforward agreement. We contract with uh, NDOT to provide the sweeping services for the uh, state highways that run through town. It's a take it or leave it kind of situation. It's not very much money and it's stayed pretty flat for many years, but it's better than nothing. Um, and either we take it and use it to toward our street sweeping that we'll do in those areas or we do it anyway and don't get paid. Any questions or comments before we uh, open it up to comments from the audience? Okay, there's any audience member who wishes to add any additional comments or questions? All right, council, we'll move back to you for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Now we will introduce our extra item, which is uh, ordinance five two three two, council president Weddle, can you introduce?
Treasurer, please read ordinance fifty-two thirty-two by title only.
Our title only. Ordinance fifty-two thirty-two, an ordinance of the city of Ocean authorizing the issuance of waterworks revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain additions, extensions, improvements to the municipal waterworks of the city.
I move for the passage of ordinance fifty-two thirty-two on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Weddle and a second from Schrock. Director of Public Works, Dustin Saylor.
Yes, um, so I sent out a memo earlier today. Um, this has been somewhat fast tracked. Um, it's an opportunity provided to us uh, by the Indiana Finance Authority, also representing the State Revolving Loan Fund. This is, um, we're in the process of developing our uh, planning for the South Well Field. You know, in early evaluation of that, estimated cost for the design phase of this is about three point five million dollars. Um, because we submitted a PER, preliminary engineering report in April, um, and had information in there regarding uh, the North Well Field. IFA has offered the city a um, a ban, uh, a bond anticipation note that would allow for um, up to four million dollars of design funding. And this band, normally we would go into the open market for funding of this and then that that bond would be repaid at the time. We close on the formal loan and this would all be included as part of our our final rate for the utility. In this particular situation, uh, State Revolving Loan Fund is offering us uh, a ban that is basically a grant. Uh, we call it a ban because that's how their funding operation works. Um, but this will be a a no cost um, bond for the city that can be used for design fees, um, and will not have any rate impact for ratepayers. So I think this is a a complete win and I really appreciate the State Revolving Loan Funds and IFA's assistance um, by offering this to the city and the ratepayers.
Thank you. Questions, comments? This is some welcome good news in the midst of a lot of not great news, so uh, we'll hopefully the council will move forward and we'll take it. Any questions or comments from the audience?
Um, oh, sorry, something because we have a lot of people here, a lot of new faces, it might behoove us to just remind everybody here what about the South Well Field and how important that is. So getting that information out to as many people as possible, I think is important. So Dustin?
Sorry.
So yeah, the uh, the city has two wellfields in Goshen. Um, one is the North Well Field and the other is the Kircher Well Field. Um, the North Well Field was built back in the nineteen thirties. Uh, the Kircher Well Field was developed in the nineteen nineties. Um, both wellfields are setting on post- post-stamp sized properties that allow for no expansion or even replacement of the wells. Um, because of that, uh, we are hamstringed is in a future development or replacement of the wells and maintenance. And so to proceed forward, we needed a new piece of property. Uh, a piece of property became available down by the airport. Are how many acres? I think it's about seventy-five acres is is what we purchased down around the wellfield or I'm sorry, the airport. Um, so that provides plenty of room for development. Uh, we have been evaluating the aquifer down there. Uh, appears to have very good water quality and um, potentially developable up to ten million gallons per day of capacity. Um, so that is what we are putting together now for construction roughly twenty twenty-seven.
Thank you. Good question. Any additional questions or comments from the audience?
I guess I just wanted to say thanks to Dustin and his team for finding, I'm just going to call it grant money. I know you called it ban. Me like, like Mayor just said, it's good news when we don't get to hear a bunch of good news. So just want to tip my hat to all that are involved that found that money. So thanks.
I would agree with that. And I I'm also wondering if, you know, we're we're looking at uh, rate increases in order to fund this total project. Will this offset some of that?
That is still being evaluated in its totality. Baker Tilly is doing a comprehensive rate analysis. Factoring in a number of things, so um, but go ahead, Dustin, did you?
Yes, I mean, that that three point five million, I talked about an open market ban that would typically be closed at the end when we do a full bond on the uh, final project. And so right now that three point five million will not be included in the rate increase.
All right, councillors, are you prepared for a vote? All those in favor of four million dollars of grant money? Say aye.
Did you say say aye?
Yes.
We didn't hear we were laughing too loud.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously on first reading. Councillors, would you be prepared for a second reading this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, the clerk treasurer read with a, oh, I'm so sorry, that's not my job.
Please read resolution fifty-two thirty-two by title only.
Yes. Okay. Ordinance fifty-two thirty-two, an ordinance is the city of Ocean authorizing the issuance of waterworks revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain additions, extensions and improvements to municipal waterworks.
I move the passage of ordinance fifty-two thirty-two on second and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Weddle and a second from Nisley. Any additional questions or comments from anybody on the council or in the audience? Seeing none, we'll move back to the council for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have unanimous consent on second reading. Okay, that brings us to ordinance five two two nine, council president Weddle.
Treasurer, please read ordinance fifty-two twenty-nine by title only.
Ordinance fifty-two twenty-nine, an ordinance imposing a municipal wheel tax and municipal vehicle excise tax and creating the City of Goshen Municipal Wheel Tax Fund and the City of Goshen Municipal Sir Tax Fund.
I move for the passive ordinance fifty-two twenty-nine on second and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Weddle and a second from Ledrock. Okay, well, as many of you may have heard, Goshen is contemplating the addition of a wheel tax at the impetus of our state government. The state has introduced new legislation that um, requires municipalities, if they want to be eligible for an automatic lane distribution, uh, they have to have a municipal wheel tax. At one point, it was deliberated about uh, whether or not any of the funding that we get through community crossings grants would require a wheel tax. They ended up shelving that idea, although I'm told it may come back uh, in the next legislative session. But what they settled on is there's a pot of money that's set aside for municipalities. Uh, if you want an automatic distribution of money for your roads and streets, you have to have a wheel tax so that you can be eligible to receive that. So this means that the residents of Goshen would have to pay if you have a that an average car would cost twenty-five dollars per year. And you would pay that when you pay, when you go to the BMV and pay your registration. Um, if you have a larger truck or uh, bigger vehicle, then you would pay forty dollars a year. Uh, and this, these funds can only be utilized for repairing our roads and streets. So this isn't something, this has been something that's been available to the city council uh, for many years. And this council body has never felt like it was a priority to move forward with the wheel tax because uh, it was not being imposed by the state as a requirement to receive any kind of funding, but that has changed. And so uh, the council and I as mayor responding in order to make sure that Goshen secures its part of that funding. Now, um, we can still apply for funding. We can still apply for community crossings funds, but that's a competitive grant process. We would like to lock in what we can. Uh, and we believe that by having this modest additional amount, um, that that will help us secure some much needed funding for there are fifty-two million dollars worth of road repairs that are needed. This fund will only generate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it's a drop in the bucket. However, we feel that um, it is a prudent use of dollars, making sure that uh, you as residents of our community are getting um, every opportunity to have access to better roads and streets. So with that, I'm sure that there's plenty of discussion from the councillors and then we will open it up to questions and comments from the audience as well. Um, we would like to hear from Goshen residents first when we go to the audience, so we will ask you to uh, affirm what city you live in before you speak and we will be hearing from uh, residents within the city boundaries who would be potentially uh, paying this tax before we move outside the city. So, but first councillors, questions, comments, discussion, additional thoughts?
I have a clarifying question. Would this be subject to annual renewal?
It can be if the council wishes to make it so.
You have to put a sunset on it. So you can do one year, two years, ten years.
This is different than the lit tax.
Which is required.
Mm-hmm, but it could be something if the council wanted to sunset it each year. Uh, we have, we would have, if there were going to be any changes made, we'd have to do that by August thirtieth of each year, so.
That was going to be my question as well. I think given the unknowns going into the next three years, having a fee that we could possibly sunset is important. And be able to discuss when we actually have more accurate information from those that are imposing on us.
I agree with what you two just said.
What did you say? I know you asked if.
I said it in a nicer way than I really.
No, but are you suggesting that we sunset it?
I'm suggesting we sunset it for a year so that if things change at the state level, which I hope they do for the better, that we might be able to adjust this next year.
Another way of looking at it would be to link it to their requirement of, in order to receive the um, community crossings, lane mile, district distributions and the uh, community crossings, link it to that. If they actually correct their error, I'm not holding my breath, but if they did, then the wheel tax would just automatically go away.
That's another way of doing it, too. What do you guys think?
Well, I was, I was looking, and I talked to council president Weddle earlier too, but I was looking at the ordinance and I'm a little, I I'm not sure that it's not covered, but it's kind of weird the way it's written, so um, like item F, use of municipal wheel tax fund, the city may only use wheel tax revenues in the municipal wheel tax fund for the following purposes. And number three is for the city's contribution to obtain a grant from the local road and bridge matching grant fund under blah, blah, blah. So if it's not in existence, that seems to
That would come.
Go away, but I'm not sure without legal counsel that that covers that.
Is that a question for me?
I'm not going to answer for legal this time.
Yes.
That's one of the approved uses, but that doesn't mean that the city couldn't use money from other sources for that match.
I mean, bridges are pretty expensive, so.
They require us to have the wheel tax in order to get funds, right?
So is the question, how long do we have to have the wheel tax to get the benefit?
If.
The community crossings has two funds or will have two funds. One is matching grants and then there's also this lane mile distribution where money's going to be set aside and then communities that have the wheel tax will uh, share distributions from that fund, but it'll be based on the number of lane miles we have in the city. It's kind of like a pro-rata type calculation that somebody will do. Yeah, my understanding is the lane mile distribution, we must have this ordinance in place to share in that distribution, the community crossings grant, which is competitive, we do not need this.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
We, not for the community crossings general pot, it's just for the lane mile distribution. Originally, it was written that you had, and what they were discussing early on is that. it was written that you had, and what they were discussing early on is that to be eligible for any portion of community crossings, you had to have a wheel tax. They are carving money out of community crossings. That's part of the reason it's confusing because they're taking a chunk of the money that used to be in the competitive grant program and putting it in this new lane mile distribution program. So when they began talking about it, they were saying you'd have to be eligible, you'd have to have a wheel tax to be eligible for community crossings funding. But there, it's.
Are we too late to get money next year?
No, not if we adopt it today.
That's why we're doing it now.
That's why we're doing it right now. We have to, so Richard has to prepare and councillor Stegman has to prepare a number of documents and turn them into the BMV and the state by September first. If we do not make that deadline, we will not be able to move forward next year.
The matching grant, it, we don't know the amount that would be.
The cap on those, I think, is a million and a half next year, one million.
So we potentially bypassing this would be seven hundred and fifty thousand for the wheel tax plus the matching grant of.
I mean, we'd have to have the matching funds and we'd have to be successful in getting the matching grant. And we, we don't have any way of knowing what the lane mile distribution is because this is new and they don't know how many communities are going to participate, so they're going to divide it up among the communities who participate, so.
And the other thing is too, we don't, we're not guaranteed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's an estimate based on what the numbers that we've received from the BMV.
And that, and that's a high estimate, really high estimate. Because there's a lot of things that they probably didn't take in to consideration. One of them is, and I'd done this myself, went to the license branch and changed all my trailer license plates over to permanent. So I only had to buy them once and I got it in before this tax went in, so I'll never have to pay that tax. The other thing I did is change my license plates to a two-year. And I paid out two years, so I don't have to redo them again until the end of twenty seven. So we, if you're counting on just numbers that they looked at, I think that number is pretty high.
I don't think we can count on anything right now, so.
I mean, the, the question is whether or not we want the lane mile distribution. That's I would frame the, the question that's before the council tonight. Obviously, it means the imposition of a, of a tax.
Yes.
I'm going to read a quote from July thirty first, twenty twenty five. This is Republican governor Mike Braun. Wheel taxes are something you're going to need to use because if you don't do that, it's going to be hard for the state to partner up in places that need even more for their own roads. He said that while he was visiting Elkhart.
And he was specifically talking about.
Goshen. That was his words. The other thing I'll mention too, thanks to our state legislators, if you live in the city limits of Goshen, you'll be taxed twice on the wheel tax. That's not us doing that, that's our state legislators.
I would agree, you, you, we have to play the cards that were dealt, which is a really bad hand. And so we get through this, get through this year, put pressure on the state legislators to make changes in the January session. And, and do what we have to do. Because that, that's what we have, that's, that's the hand we were dealt at this point.
Some of the other communities that I've talked to is they're just staying flat for this year and not going to do anything. I know the county's going to look at running out of, taking money out of their rainy, rainy day fund. You know, this really doesn't really hurt us probably until twenty seven and twenty eight. My concern is, is that we're going to the public to ask for a tax that they're going to be taxed twice for. And we haven't even looked at our budget to see what's in there that we could eliminate to help this without going to this, to the public and asking for another tax. Down the road, we all know that we're going to be doing fees, you know. We've been told that we're looking at trash fee, making, making the community pay for the trash pickup. You know, other fees that are coming on top of this too, the water with the new wells, new fees that are coming there. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We could make it through twenty six with what we have now and give them downstate the chance to fix their screw ups.
We do know that we're estimated, and this is based on the state's information that they provided, about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars less in revenue than what we would have gotten before SB one was implemented. So we know that's happening. We also know that we have other bonding units like the library that have added it's reduced the property tax caps and the revenues that we're receiving. And I will tell you that every division of this city has made cuts in their budget for next year in order to make sure that we are presenting something to the city that's fair and that we're operating within our means. I recognize that you're taking that on faith. I have not presented you with those numbers yet. But the folks behind you can tell you that they presented ideas to stay flat or come up with savings options for future years. This isn't something that we would take lightly. I also don't know of any district that couldn't use a little bit of extra money for their roads and streets. In every single district, so if your district is part of that, I hope that that would be something that you would be willing to consider.
So one thing that I'll just echo one of our residents last meeting, Mr. Doyle. His comment, and I think it, it makes sense, if we have an additional, if we have additional seven hundred thousand dollars comes into the city going towards our roads, his concern, and it would be my concern, and it should be everyone's concern, is that we're not diverting seven hundred thousand dollars. It was always, always going to go to the roads to something else. We want that money to stay and it would be an additional that was, so there would be more for our roads that are in desperate need of help.
And then let's also remember that, that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars only does on a total rebuild about less than one block of road repair. So is there not rainy day money there that we can tap into to help us make it through? Like I said, we've got, we've got until twenty seven, twenty eight to really look at this and drill down on it. And make our cuts. But we need to look at our budget. I know the mayor says that everybody has cut, yes, they have cut, and I've talked to a few of the department heads that's done that. And there's a few that, you know, they're afraid that with cuts they have to make, you know, services are going to be cut. But that's something we have to look at.
I'll go into it a little more depth during the elected officials report, but if anyone wants to listen to the county council's meeting from last week or even work session, county council has no idea how they're going to even do their budget when they have no idea what their revenues are based upon SEA one. And to ask us, Elkhart County, Elkhart City, Napanee, to be able to make these difficult decisions when the state can't even give you reliable numbers because they don't even understand that they passed, it's very disheartening, very disheartening for us, but also for the people who are sitting over here in front of us and anyone else. It's going to be a very, very difficult thing, and I think we need to be as proactive as possible to anticipate the worst case scenario.
In an ideal scenario, councillor Nissley, you make a great point, like it, the, the the correct sequence of things, if there were a correct sequence, would be to wait till after the budget is passed and then introduce this. Unfortunately, if we're going to do this for next year, then we have, today is the day. So I hear, and I, I don't disagree that it would be a preferable scenario to make that determination after the budget had passed. But unfortunately, we're not, we, we don't get to decide what that timeline is for this year, so. Any additional questions from councilors?
I, I would just add, I, I, I do not think we can forego this lane mile distribution eligibility. I mean, it, I think it would be irresponsible of us to turn our backs on that, and no one wants to increase the cost of living in Goshen. And if we pass a tax, we will do that, and I would certainly welcome a discussion about affordability in our community and how we can contribute to that. We have been handed this raw deal from the state, and the onus is on us now to go to our legislators and ask them actively, work on this, listen to our concerns and the proposed solutions and do something to fix this. I would love to sunset this. And not have to pass any new taxes, but the position we're in tonight is that we are looking at foregoing possible money from the state that can go to help fix our roads and sidewalks, and I think that would be irresponsible. And I've also heard from citizens, there are people who are saying, yes, I am willing to pay this tax, and they are concerned for the people who do not have as much money and the impact it will have on them and concerns about this being regressive, but I think we have to move forward with it.
Thank you. Anyone else before we?
Before we go to public?
Yes.
Would it, if someone wants to make a motion for a sunset, would now be a good time to do that, or should we wait till after public comment?
I think waiting till we hear from public comment. But I want to make sure all the councilors have had an opportunity before we open it up to additional discussion. Anybody else wants to say anything?
I have some more comments, but I think I was going to wait till after the public comment, but.
All right. All right, with that, we will open the floor to folks from the city of Goshen who would be impacted by this, so that means you'd actually have to live inside the city limits. So if you could come forward, or if you need a microphone, we can also bring one to you. Please print and state your name and speak to the council for less than three minutes. Welcome, Mr. Stoffer.
Your time's. Sorry, I have to spell my name.
Your time's up, I'm kidding.
My name is Paul Stoffer and I am indeed a resident of Goshen, a proud resident of the north side in District Three. I'm here to speak in favor of passing the proposed wheel and excise taxes. No one likes new taxes, obviously, but under the circumstances, I think this is a no-brainer. These new fees are one of the few options available to the city to offset some of the projected revenue shortfalls. And plus, as, as pointed out, they unlocked some additional sources of funding from the state that we might, you know, probably won't get if we don't pass this thing. Now, to be clear, as was acknowledged, Governor Mike Braun and his Republican supermajority in the State House created this financial mess. But it, dealing with the fallout is left to you guys, our local elected officials, regardless of your party affiliation. But considering who caused the problem, I do think the Republicans on this council bear an extra burden of responsibility. And I lost my place, to be a part of the solution here. So you all have a choice to make. This is about choosing to be responsible or choosing to avoid responsibility. If you care about fiscally responsible government, I would ask you to vote yes on this. And I ask that, I hope that this measure will pass with unanimous support. Thank you, and thank you all for your service to our city during this difficult time.
Thank you. Next. Welcome, Mr.
John Dozel, Goshen resident. I would also stand, as a property owner, I support this wheel tax, not happy about it, of course, no one would be happy about it. But I'm also predicting that in two years, there's going to be politicians live in the governor's mansion and go to our legislature, or be bragging about how they cut our taxes. And yet they left it up to you and the residents of cities all over Indiana to then deal with the consequences just so they could brag that they cut taxes. When actually what they were doing was taking money out of one pocket and putting it into another pocket, so. It's my comment.
Thank you, John. If you prefer to sit, we can also bring a microphone.
No, I do not, thank you. Nancy Brown. I am a citizen of Goshen, have been for most of my life. I would like to know why the city of Goshen or any municipality is going to buckle under to the state's arm twisting to get any kind of funding. I'm against the wheel tax. I think it's wrong. I think the property taxes did a great dis- disservice to the community. I don't like it. I don't remember how many times that we've been told taxes are going to, they're going to pay for our roads, our roads are going to be good. And it never happens. I'd probably have to do more research if I was inclined. But you all know that this has happened time and time again. We were supposed to get money from the Hoosier Lottery. That never happened, this much. It's on Pissed Off, and I want you to know it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. We encourage you to direct that enthusiasm and sentiment to our folks downstate. Welcome, Mr. Brenneman.
My name's Rob Brenneman. I am from Goshen, District Four. I support the wheel tax. I know it's a hard decision and I don't envy you to have to vote for a tax if you do, but I encourage you to do that. I live the cross street where I live is Monroe, I think, and between fourth, fifth and sixth street, it's basically a gravel road there. I spent the better part of my twenties living in Guatemala City. The roads are better there than in good chunk of, of Goshen. It's no fun to pay taxes for, for anything really, but for cars. I pay a lot in car insurance because I have two teens, and so I guess forty dollars or twenty five dollars feels like a drop in the bucket, but compared to how much I have to pay for car insurance, but that's another issue. But for cars to, to be able to use a car, we need infrastructure for that. It's not free to drive. Somebody has to build a road in order for my car to be any use to me, so I do have to pay. And I, I don't like it, but I support the tax.
Thank you.
I sympathize with the insurance for teenagers.
Again, we can bring a microphone to you. Mike, can you take them? Nancy, we're just trying to be helpful. Okay, we're doing our best.
My name's Kevin Marks. I've lived here in Goshen ever since I retired from the military. And it's something I'm used to, really used to. I'm used to sacrificing. And I know that, you know, any, anytime you have a task, you know, it's, it's a sacrificial, you know, sacrificial thing, you know. I appreciate the comments from Mr. Nissley. I respect those comments. I really enjoyed listening to you speak. My thing is about the wheel tax. If I'm going to be basically forced to, to pay a wheel tax, okay, I own a truck, small truck, a van, and I've also got a camper. Now, are campers included in this tax? Okay, if campers are included, there's other registered vehicles here in Goshen too. There are scooters and there's golf carts. Are there, are they going to be paying taxes too? Because I want to know. I, I need an answer. I want to know.
My understanding is anything that is registered through the BMV. My understanding is anything that is registered through the BMV, plated, would be subject.
So scooters would be subject?
If, if they're plated, I know there's, I, I don't know the details.
They're putted, just like my vehicle. And golf carts are same way.
The ORVs would, because the ORVs are licensed through the state because they can access all roads. Golf carts are limited to a very specific number of residential streets.
Okay, and what about, what about boats? They're considered RVs? Are they, and they're registered by the state?
Trailer is, yes.
The trailer is, they'll, they'd be subject to taxes too, right? Okay, you know, I'm, I'm not in favor of these wheel taxes. Because like I said, I sacrificed a good majority of my, my life, you know, for this country, you know? And, and, like I said, I, you know, what's good for the goose, good for the gander. I think that every vehicle that's registered with, with county, you gotta reverse that vehicle, whether it be a trailer, whether it be a motorcycle, I don't even care if it's a bicycle. I, I ride a bicycle. You know? I know it's not registered, so I know it's not gonna be taxable, but, you know, if you use the roads here in Goshen, you know, fair is fair, you know? And also, what about these, what about the transport vehicles that transport RVs from point A to point B?
If they're registered with the state within our city limits, then yes, they would be subject.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I will say.
Thank you too, for your service, first of all.
I will say one thing. If you look on what is exempt from this tax, one that caught my eye was any vehicle registered to a funeral home is exempt from this tax. I'm not sure, the only thing I can figure out is we've had somebody downstate that is a funeral director that, that wanted that in.
You're a shrewd man, Mr. Nisley. Anyone else? Come on up. If you, if you could come up.
Virginia.
Could you?
Been in Goshen thirty years. And I'm against the wheel tax because we're on a limited income. Where we, when we get our raise for social security, it's gonna go for Medicare insurance. Where do we get the money from? We have to give up food. We have to give up other things to pay things we can't afford. What do you want us to do, give our blood? I'm sorry. Can you think about giving senior citizens sixty-five and older a lower tax rate, maybe half? That would be great. I would go with that. I hope that you think about it.
Thank you, Mrs. Marks, I appreciate your comments.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Antunera and we own two vehicles. I figure it's two dollars and eight cents a month per vehicle. We don't have a lot of extra boats and so on. I know grocery expenses have gone sky high and that it's really, really difficult these days for many of us. I don't know if it's possible to prorate these taxes somehow or other based on income. I have no idea. But I am in support of the tax. It feels like the city is being coerced. Surely, the city's been coerced by the state. And losing whatever funding could be coming in seems like too much of a risk. I'll sign my name.
Print please, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Becky.
I'm Jerry Randolph and I live in Goshen. And I think this wheel tax is just a way of getting more money, period. I don't think you need it for the roads. I don't think you need it for the streets or anything else. It's just taxing people to death. I don't care what you say. You waste a lot of money out here on these walk, walkways so people can go out and have fun on Sundays or whenever, but you can't think about the people of Goshen. We are being taxed to death. My property right now is taxed over two thousand dollars a year. Just my property. I live off of social security. You guys make good money up here, or you wouldn't be sitting up there. I know, yeah. But we're supposed to be taxed to death. What worries your heart? I mean, some of these people don't care, but I'm telling you, from where I'm sitting, I can't afford it. And I have a handicapped daughter that I have to care for. And I'm eighty years old and to be tell you, to tell you the truth, I just think it sucks.
Thank you, Mrs. Randolph.
Hello, my name's Nicholas Singer. I've been in Goshen for a year now. I live near the fire station on College. I think it does suck about the tax and that you guys have a responsibility to try to make up the budget deficit that you guys, I was here last month and I know you talked about several cuts that you've already had to make. You know, including, you know, fire, of, of fire station employees, you know? And, you know, just earlier, we had, we moderated, you know, several of these great men and women and to make our place of, our city of Goshen better. And do this state lowering our revenue, that can't happen anymore. And so I think having this tax in place, while it won't be any firefighter, I think it will definitely make our place of city, roads and streets better than what it was before without it. Not to mention the fact that we get the mild distribution potential funds from that also. And also, also, it's not like you guys said that you can't change this down the road. It's not gonna be, doesn't have to be a forever thing. You know, one year, twenty-five dollars, forty, eighty, depending on if you have four vehicles or a trailer, a camper. No offense to those people, but if you have five vehicles, you usually have the money to pay for five vehicles. And so I just wanna say I'm supportive of this.
Thank you, Mr. Stoffer.
Also, sorry.
It's all right.
This deficit is due to property taxes being lowered, right? So, a lot of these people here who have houses are getting their taxes cut. And so they, no, sorry. I thought they're probably.
That's the bill of sale that was sold.
Okay, then that's my misunderstanding then, but.
No, you were, you were, you are repeating what you've been told.
Okay, thank you. But overall, I still think it's a good idea to get the additional funds.
The city's revenue has been reduced because of the changes in SB one. So that is, that part is true.
Okay, and I.
But we'll talk in a little bit about some of the complexities of the bill that's been proposed and why it's problematic.
Okay, I do appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I will say I have seen construction driving around Goshen. So I know you guys are working out there, working and fixing the roads.
Yes. Kudos to Dustin's team.
Ron Beiler, I live in downtown Goshen and I love it. Thank you for the work you do on behalf of the city. I only have a question. If for when you pass this resolution, can you settle, send a letter of protest with it or to the state?
Oh, I don't think there'll be any shortage.
Please, but I'm, I'm talking about from this council. Can you send a letter of protest to the state? Because this is only the beginning.
Thank you. That's a good food for thought. Welcome, Mr. Hoosier.
Mark Hoosier, Goshen. Unlike most of the people sitting here tonight, I was sitting here some, well, I believe it was two thousand nine when all this came as far as road tax to begin with, wheel tax. And at that time, it was presented by the city, by the county, everyone, that it was to, the road tax was, the road wheel tax was to supplement the current budget. Well, I did some research since then. And, and I know then actually also, I was also sitting here when the very first announcement came that the state had okayed a wheel tax being passed in Oakheart County. That the mayor at that time was very excited and he expressed that, great, we can move funds from someplace else, elsewhere now, because we won't need them for the roads. Well, Councilman Thomas at that point spoke up and said, Mr. Mayor, I don't think that's what was intended. Well, unfortunately, I personally believe the roads have went downhill the past, since two thousand nine. And so I would question where the roads, where the money ever went to begin with. Councilman Winkle tonight expressed with, I think he said, Mr. Doyle, I would like to see the council, you mayor, to have enough courage then to say, and I have no idea what figure is currently used by the street department or our roads, but let's just throw out eight percent, just, you know, of the city budget. Okay, so next year rolls around, I would like to see if this road taxes approved then, that eight percent still remains for city roads plus the additional seven hundred and fifty thousand. And I would like to see that in some type of movement. Because what the state did back in two thousand nine was, yeah, they had everyone implying that this wheel tax money was gonna go here. Well, it does. At, at least I'm assuming it does. But our city budget went downhill. I liked smothered that a spoke on a fixed income now, have been. This does make a difference. My standard of living continues to go down each and every year, my personal standard of living. That's what I'm interested in, you know? Is how can I at least maintain status quo? So those are my only comments. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Jim Norton, I live here in Goshen at fourteen ten Pembroke Circle. I have been really concerned about the fact that most of our money has been, you know, most of the people here in Goshen, the city of Goshen, voted for somebody who kind of brought this on. So let's, let's talk about the fact that, and, and the question is, and one of the, one of the issues that I know that really gets me is the fact that we wanna put a lot of money into ICE, you know, and to get rid of the immigrants. Well, the immigrants are the ones that are making Goshen. I've been a landlord for over thirty years. In that thirty years, in the beginning, I rented both to citizens and to immigrants. It was the citizens that I had to take to court. The immigrants always paid, took care of the property. I soon quit renting to citizens and only rented to immigrants because they took care of the property, they paid timely. And over the thirty years, I have not had one case of not being paid on that. And I have, like I say, ten units and two that I managed on that over for that period of time. So that's where the money has gone. The other thing, of course, you know, we actually caused some of this. I visited the state of Oaxaca back in the nineties when NAFTA went in. The taxes destroyed their economy. That's why the people came north, because that's the only place that they could live on that.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Anybody else? Okay, counselors?
I, I would also like to say, you know, just make this statement that, you know, I'm on, I'm on Facebook a lot. And, and I'm on Facebook a lot because I read a lot about my hometown. Now, I'm not originally from Indiana, nor am I originally from Goshen. I'm originally from a town called Fallstory, Ohio. And I remember years ago, my hometown was a very, very thriving hometown. And I don't know what went wrong, but now it's like a ghost town. And I don't wanna see Goshen turn into Fallstory, Ohio. I just don't. This town has always been a thriving town. But I do believe that, that Goshen, especially in the political realm, we can be wise about our spending. I, I know we can, you know? And there's other ways to come up with money, you know? You know, recently, you know, our, our, our city pool closed down. And I had a few questions about that. Is it cheaper to build a new one? Is it cheaper to maintain it? I can tell you what happened in my hometown. They tore their pool down last summer. And they're not even replacing it. They can't afford it. So I think, well, I, I think overall, what, what we really need to do is just look at where we're spending our money. Look at where the city is spending the money. I mean, I, I drive by, you know, the, the city garage every once in a while and I see all these city vehicles parked, not doing anything. Why aren't they parked? Why aren't they being used? Why haven't we fixed any of them up? Is it cheaper to sell them? I don't know. And, you know, I mean, why, why are they just sitting? Let's put them on the auction block. If you, if we're not using, let's put them on the auction block, make some money for the city. You know, I think, basically, I think you all need to get out and look around and say, where do I see these things? Where am I seeing this waste of spending? You know? I've, I've seen a lot of, a lot of towns go under. There's another town I'm following in Ohio, it's starting to go under. And the reason why? Because our city officials don't get out and walk around, talk to people and look at where the city's losing money. You know, I think we could have saved a million dollars in a couple of years here in Goshen, the last couple of years. I know so. I know so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I believe those cars are going up for auction.
Yes, there are a number of cars going up for auction. And if he's referencing the central garage where we have cars repaired, our, our fleet manager works very hard to do routine maintenance to ensure that we stretch the lifetime of those vehicles as long as we possibly can. We also have a lot of vehicles that are relied upon for emergency services. And so we wanna make sure that they are in good working order at all times. So there's usually, there's a regular set of vehicles that the, the team of mechanics works on every single day to make sure that that routine maintenance is happening. Okay. Dustin, did you see my random question? In oh eight, the cost of concrete was about a hundred and ten dollars a yard and now it's two hundred dollars a yard. It's part of the reason, when it comes to infrastructure, the, that is far outpaced the rate of inflation for average living expenses. So cities, even if we had the same amount of revenue, we would be falling behind. And that's why our city department heads work so diligently to stretch every dollar on this community's behalf and to do more with less and less and less every year because we cannot keep up with the, with the increase in the cost of goods. But we're doing our best to make sure that the vibrant city that you all love continues to be a shining place where people wanna come and live. So now, council, move back to you for additional discussion. After you've heard from some of the folks here.
I got a few comments.
Take it away.
All right. If you guys will bear with me for several minutes.
Always.
Several minutes. Um, I wrote some notes down today, so I'm just going to kind of read them because it's going to be easier than me trying to remember everything. And I want to make sure I have everything covered. So, um, and I empathize with some of the statements that people said, I really do. And hopefully I can clear up some things here by the time we get done. But the state legislators put cities in a difficult situation with many uncertainties. That's where the problem is right now. As to what the outcome would be and many unknown consequences. So there's too many, there's a lot of unknowns and counselor initially mentioned some things too. And I, I agree with that, that do you wait or do you, you take a chance or do you go? And so, um, our own governor suggested the city should enact a wheel tax to cover the shortfall. Plus to be eligible for the community crossing and the mile match grant program, which I think is important match. It's, it's, again, it's like free money, but you have to spend a little money to get that free money, so to speak. So, um, and I want to answer a question that somebody had raised. According to my calculations, most homeowners will not receive any major property tax relief. Okay. Um, and will still be subject to the 1% cap. So you're going to be paying the same that you were paying before, as long as your appraisal doesn't go up. But we've been subject to the 1% cap for years. I've, I've never been able to get under that. I've always been right there at the 1%. So I know what my taxes are going to be because it's going to be 1% of what they appraised my house at. But all Homestead, all Homestead tax bills provides for a new 10% property tax credit capped at $300. So you are going to get some relief. Everybody is going to get some relief due to that. That is applied after the circuit breaker credit and all other credits. Um, for example, over 65 credit, blind and disabled, et cetera. There's going to be other credits that are out there as well. I think that over 65 is another $150. So, I'll take it. Um, it appears one of the major property tax savings to me, and I haven't got this nailed down yet, is the business personal property tax, which increases exemption thresholds from like 80,000 to 2 million. That, that's at the 3% cap. And those 3% people will benefit from this. So they're going to be saving taxes, but the homeowners are not going to be saving taxes. No one likes new taxes or fees, but that is where we are today. Um, there are certain services and amenities that affect everyone. Police, fire, water and sewer, roads, trash pickup. Those five things, everybody's, everybody's got to use, or everybody needs to have, right? We are at a quandary in what, in, in that no one knows for certain what will be the total fallout due to SB1. There are some knowns though. Um, some knowns from the past. Goshen was already reviewing additional road expenditures due to our Pacer score of below four. And, and not everybody's going to know, but it was an open meeting. The Pacer, Pacer, Pacer score is the condition that our roads are in and and Dustin, you can correct me if I'm wrong. It, it basically go from zero to 10, I think is the highest, right? Okay. So everybody's got a, everybody's got a, a gauge, zero to 10. And, um, our Pacer score was below four when we did that, when we did that analysis. Um, and then some of the other things that we covered in that, in that, uh, time was with our current $2 million budget, the projected score in 2030 would fall to below three and a half. Okay. So $2 million was not going to cover it. It was not going to get us any higher. If we increase the budget to 3,230,000 per year, we could get to a score of 4.26, which is better than where we're at, but still not acceptable. At a budget of $7 million per year, we could raise our Pacer score to above six by the year 2030. So we were already talking about where are we going to get the money for our roads? We are in need of additional funds to reach a goal for better roads in Goshen. And the current SB1 appears to hinder our goal to get roads better. So I believe, this is my, this is my opinion. I believe that we should approve this second reading of the wheel tax for several reasons. Goshen needs the funds to increase our Pacer scores and improve our roads. The benefit, the benefit is it, it affects all residents of Goshen. If we have good roads, everybody uses those roads. Um, all homestead property owners will be getting a reduction in property taxes of up to 300. All we are asking for is a little bit back to improve our roads. So everybody's going to save money and if, if you have one card, $25 back to us. If you would, most business benefits from the business personal property tax exemption and should see a reduction in their taxes. All we are asking for, from them is a little bit of this back to improve our roads. We have the possibility of getting matching funds from the, the grant process, right? We don't know how much it's going to be. If we don't, if we don't get on board, we'll, we'll never know how much it's going to be because we don't have the opportunity to find out how much it's going to be. Uh, which is only available if we exact a wheel, if we enact a wheel tax and reading through the, reading through their literature, I think it's 50/50. It's even if it's an even match if we're granted.
So that's the community crossings grant, but the lane mile distribution is separate. So this is just to let us get the lane mile distribution.
Okay. For, for most homeowners, this equates to less than per car, to less than seven cents per day. But again, some will say we're nickel and diming us to death with taxes. We are. And that fills right into between the nickel and the dime is that seven cents, but it's seven cents per day. And that's, it's really what we are asking from everyone to have a better, have a better road system. Um, I, I'm in, that's kind of tossed between the sunset or not. And we didn't really get down to that, but I, I'm kind of looking at, maybe there should be an amendment to discontinue if the grants program is discontinued. But again, maybe we should just discontinue it in two years to see how this is going to pan out. So everybody knows we have a sunset. I remember, and I can't tell you which year, but it was a while ago when the county enacted a wheel tax that was going to be good for five years. They never took it away. So if we sunset this, I think that would be a comfort level to everybody that we're going to look at it again in two years. And if we were able to improve our Pacer scores and we use this money the way that we promised to use this money above and beyond what we have budgeted for in the past, then I think we're doing, I think we're doing the right thing. So you, you're going to have, and I know politicians say this all the time, you're going to have to trust us, but we know what the budget is. And I think everyone right here at these two tables is going to hold everyone accountable to make sure that that money is used correctly.
One thing I was going to say is both you guys used the quote from Braun about enacting a wheel tax. And you're taking that as gospel. You got to remember, he's the one that crafted why we're in this position we are. And you're trusting him to say that?
Well.
I don't trust, I don't trust anybody from the state right now. But we don't know how we're going to be affected. And I think we need to take every precaution to make sure that we can keep moving forward and using this money that we can get for good use. So I, I don't.
You know, it has to be kind of bad, you know, I'm a Republican and so was he. We're not supposed to talk bad about him, but he did not do the job that he was put in there to do. It's just.
I know. Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I don't, I don't think they know what the outcome is yet. So.
Either, you know, and I think it was, I'll, I'll just say it's, you know, it's what the Democrats did with the big bill that they pushed when Biden was in. You know, Pelosi said, well, you got to pass it and then we'll read it. And I think that's what happened in this one.
In that one. I, I see a, I see a benefit though to this because we are getting, if we enact this, we do get some funds.
Well, no, that's not a guarantee.
It's not, but I, that money is there. So I'm going to assume that we should be able to get some of that pot. But we'll know. And if, if it comes to not be true, then we have the sunset amendment, so to speak. If we put it in there, then it goes away in two years.
The two year, I think is too long to, to push it out to, to see if it works.
So as you're deliberating, deliberating and just one piece of data that I think might be helpful, and Dustin, I'm going to put you on the spot. But, uh, my experience in the city, there are no plans for any infrastructure that take less than two years. And so to be able to plan and implement, I mean, it would be helpful to have a longer runway to know. So I think Dustin, how long does it take to plan a road project and implement it typically?
Full reconstruction is at least two years, just a mill resurface. We can typically prepare it in the winter months to have it for the next year.
How many, how many plans do we have right now for next year?
Well, you're going to decide that in a couple of weeks.
Well, right now, that's, I don't want to put the.
About asking this, how many were in place for 2025? Full repaving or just, where, where were you going with your question?
Total, total road repair. I mean, to do, how many full road repairs do we have? I know one.
So, uh, we finished up 10th Street. Um, we have Kircher Road. We had, um, Plymouth Avenue, uh, Johnston Street. We were down in, um, Waterford Mills, repairing roads down there this year.
Oak Ridge.
Oak Ridge.
Hackett Road.
Hackett. And then we also worked on section of Wildon. So I, yeah, we got a map, but, uh, put on the spot like that. It's easier for dollars. So we were over $4 million of road investment this year.
And then you got Indiana Avenue next year.
That's the hope. But again, it's going to be funding dependent.
I don't know if this is in context or out of context, but Dustin, did you do any research on slurry roads and chip and seal and less expensive things that we can do to the roads that, that we can save the ones that don't need to be rebuilt and give them another five to 10 years for a lot less money than total reconstruction?
Yeah, five, five to 10 years is stretched, kind of as we presented in the, um, work session is, is we're in the freestyle area. Um, and so chip and seal, we're definitely looking at applying chip and seal to roads. We're going to get three to five years additional wear surface out of that. The slurry seals, um, we've tried some of that down on 14th and 15th Streets. They work for a period of time, two to three years, but the cracks propagate back up through. Um, and that, that does nothing for our Pazer rating. As soon as the cracks show and reflect back up, the Pazer rating goes back to where it originally was. So we don't, yes, we, we made it look better for a short period of time. We don't get any real monetary benefit back out of that application.
Well, I have some comments first. Um, first I want to say that Nancy, 100% agree with you that I'm pissed off and this tax sucks. And I guarantee most of you out there feel the same way. Um, what I want to point out is the past, however long past few administrations, we've been doing really well financially. We've always had a surplus. We've always had good cash reserves. We've always done really, really well with our money. So much so that we were able to plan for a new pool. We planned for a new fire station. And now because of the state and the way that they've decided to change their funding because of Governor Braun and our state representatives, we are now not able to build a new pool. We have to put that on hold potentially for good or hopefully not. Who knows, we'll be able to get this new fire station. And who knows how we're going to fund the $35 million in road repairs that we have to do. This is a small portion of that. So we all are angry. We are all angry. I am angry that I have to vote for this. I'm angry that I have to potentially put more fees down. I have to pay for those too. Every one of us has to pay for those. Mike Braun is making us do a lot of different things because of his thing. We are. So we all have hard decisions that we have to make and none of us are happy about it. So please recognize that these are not decisions that we want to make. And we want to make sure that we are being as responsible as possible. So we feel your anger. We echo your anger. At least I do. I'm not going to speak for everybody else up here.
Okay, we're, we're, Ms. Nancy. Hang on just a second. We're, we're, we're back to comments for the council right now. We've already taken comments from the audience.
Just take a minute. Just take a minute.
All right.
You said we had a surplus last year?
We've had a lot of cash reserves.
A lot of cash reserves. Where'd it go?
So the, oh, I want to clarify. So.
Let her answer that.
I'm not asking you.
Well, I'm the one who prepares the budget. So I will.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I will, I will answer your question. So the city had designated funds. So we get funds from the state that can only be used for specific purposes to make sure that you have clean drinking water, to make sure that the dirty water in your house disappears when you flush the toilet, to make sure that our public safety responds in the appropriate amount of time when you have a heart attack. Most of our firefighters' responses are medically related, more than 85% of them. We also have public safety officers that we are paying for. And so as our population adjusts, so does our needs for emergency response and public safety. So all of the designated funds that come in for a specific fund get designated for those dollars. Now, during COVID, when things were shut down, we were not able to spend things on some of the road repairs and some of the long-term projects that we had planned to do. But, and so we developed higher cash balances, but we couldn't spend them on anything else except those infrastructure projects that they were designated for. So this would be like if you give money to the Boys and Girls Club for their nutrition program, they can't spend it on anything else besides that. So when the state gives us money for something that's designated, we can only spend it for those things. So I just want to clarify that we're not just sitting on loads of cash like Scrooge McDuck over here, swimming around in it. We have to spend the money on the things that the state tells us we can spend that money on. So.
Exactly.
Did I answer your question?
No.
Okay.
But I don't. I want to know, how come we're so damn poor? You guys are collecting all these taxes. Where's all this money going? You're saying roads. Okay, I understand that. Why can't we figure out something cheaper to do?
Well, let's meet for coffee and I can explain that in more detail. Okay, I, I do want to.
Some way to do things better, cheaper, safer.
I hear you. Now, I've been respectful and allowed you to come back and say some additional things. So I'm going to give the time back to the council for their deliberation. Thank you. Counselors.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any additional comments or discussion?
I'm not making a motion, but is there anyone that wants to make a motion before we go to a vote?
Given what the mayor said, like, are we, like, if we sunset this, is this going to cause? Like, if we sunset it, they can't plan.
That is the challenge.
But if we don't sunset it.
Then we have to call it, we have to physically call it forward to cancel it in the future. And as has been stated, and I would probably agree, once it's in place, it's not going anywhere. But we would have the ability to call it forward to cancel it if we.
Absolutely. Well, as with any other ordinance that exists in the city, there is that opportunity to do that at any point in time.
We're, if we, do we have to designate which projects we're using these funds for? Or if we have projects in the mill, so to speak, right now, we can spend that money if we get it next year on those projects, right?
Yes, we just need to know what, what's being budgeted. So if we would, for example.
When will they tell us for next year? When will they tell us for next year?
By, uh, so when we met with Senator Thompson, he said we should have numbers that should be accurate by end of July next year. We start budget planning in June.
And the ordinance, the ordinance said something about that I don't remember, the clerk treasurer will give us numbers on what we can expect for.
I mean, we get the, so the numbers that come from, those are coming from the, uh, the BMB, so, I mean, Counselor Nisley was right, like, there's fluctuations every year, people move in and out of town, they have different vehicles, and so what we're receiving from the BMB is a snapshot today, but people like him could go get permanent licenses and, you know.
It says here that on or before October first of each year, the clerk treasurer shall provide the mayor and common council an estimate of the surtax revenues to be received by the city during the next calendar year.
That's what I thought.
And so obviously, he's not gonna have numbers this October first.
I mean, we'll, we have the, we have the numbers already that have been provided by the BMB based on the snapshot of what they've got today. But, I mean, and looking back historically, we can see, you know, there's some validity in the numbers that they're, that they're providing to us, it's not. But it is possible that there could be an increase or decrease in the number of cars on the road.
Safe to say that the estimates from the BMB are more accurate and reliable than the estimates that we're receiving on revenues from the state.
A million percent.
So do we want a sunset?
I think we should. And, and I think we should. I know it causes some.
We can't.
Faulty, however, I think that one, nobody's happy about this. So if we can find a way to bring it back to the conversation in two years, specifically because by ordinance we would have to, and I think it's a good compromise.
What about tying it, like you were saying?
I think one year's Dustin any flexibility, I think two years probably doesn't give Dustin any flexibility with projects, might be my concern. A lot of number everywhere, anywhere you want, I don't know. And rehash the same arguments, same conversations over and over again.
You don't think now we should?
I'm not, I have not been supportive of a sunset to begin with.
So you think we should tie it then, do what?
If you wanna, if you wanna, that would be what I would do if you're, I'm not gonna make that motion. But if you want to tie it to that requirement versus putting a timeframe on it.
What, what would we tie it into? Which one? Both of them? Which one?
You're saying if the state were to eliminate the requirement uh, for having a, a wheel tax in order to to, to get for the, the lane distribution or community crossing, then that would trigger a reevaluation by the council on our wheel tax during our budget.
I'm not making that motion, but I.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Because my thing is, this, before SEA one even came into existence, we knew we were short millions and millions of dollars, millions of dollars. I think that even if SEA hadn't passed, we'd be in this position anyway, talking about how can we give Dustin and our engineering department and our streets and roads an opportunity to try and improve the roads that the people sitting here looking at us are trying to drive on.
I agree with that.
Make that motion. And we tie it together as the mayor explained.
So the, the motion would be that, uh, if the state removes the requirement uh, to access either community crossings or lane mile distributions, that, that would trigger a reevaluation of this ordinance.
At any time.
At any time. Bodie, did I capture the nature of the motion in totality?
Yes, I'd have to hear again exactly what.
The motion is, uh, that, uh, the council would, if the state were to remove the requirement uh, for having a wheel and excise tax to access community crossings funding or lane mile distribution funding. Wait, did I say?
And, not or, but and.
Well, right now it's an either or, but it could, so.
If they do either one.
I'm, but they're talking about doing it next year. So if they remove that requirement, then we, that would trigger a reevaluation of this ordinance by the co- by the council.
So it's on either, it's on either one, or, yeah.
Remove the wheel tax in lane.
Where does that?
So is it trigger and cause a reevaluation of this tax or an expiration of this tax?
It would require a reevaluation of the tax. So we'd have to see where we are.
Be an expiration.
Yeah, can we do an expiration on it?
Well.
I don't know that you want to do an expiration mid-year.
I mean, that gets really complicated. I, my thinking was that it would be reevaluated so that it could be incorporated because Dustin's made a budget then predicated on that assumption, and we're cutting off those projects at an awkward time, so it seems like it would be better to incorporate that into the budget planning process. But it could be reevaluated at any point in time. Wouldn't have to be during a budget meeting. We have a motion from Nisley.
Second.
We have a second from Reed Sucker. Councillors, are you prepared to vote on the amended?
Just the amendment.
Just the amendment to the ordinance.
But where is that going?
It would go, I'm gonna guess.
In the whereas?
In the whereas, um.
Bodie.
One.
The recitals have no legal effect, I mean, the whereas paragraph, so we're really talking, making a change. I would suggest right before section three. Would you say? Three currently says other ordinances, I would suggest you're gonna make an amendment, it would be right before that paragraph.
Say that again, Bodie.
Section three.
So we'd add a new section three. Says, should the state of Indiana, uh, eliminate its requirement, the requirement of municipalities to have the wheel or excise tax to access full uh, community crossings or lane mile distribution, the city council would reevaluate the continuation of this tax.
Must, must.
Must.
Yes.
Must.
We have to vote now?
Well, I, I would, I guess, I'm not opposed to this, but it, it feels like we're just shooting in the dark, knowing that in January, they're gonna come up with something, or maybe not. And, and we might have to, regardless of what we put here, we might have to revisit this. Or they'll have, or they'll have new, new guidelines and so on. So I, I guess there, it, it, this is like no, no harm in voting for this, but I quite honestly am not sure it does much good.
Councillors, are you prepared to move forward with the?
Just the amendment.
Amendment.
Would you do a roll call vote, please?
I just want to have, um, I just want to make sure that the city attorney has clarity about this because as was previously mentioned, this has to go to the BMB by September first, or this will not take effect.
Would state that if the state legislature removes requirement for wheel and excise tax to make the city eligible for community crossing matching grant and lane mile distributions, the city council shall reevaluate the taxes imposed under this ordinance.
Is it shall or must?
Well.
I wrote shall.
The only thing I would modify is community crossings or Mr. Stegman. Or lane mile distribution.
Uh, yes, or.
Thank you. Proceed with the roll call, please.
This is only on the amendment, not the, uh.
This is a vote on the amendment. Councilor Gerber?
No.
That's the lead rock.
Yes.
That's for Nisley.
Yes.
That's for Peel.
Yes.
That's for Red Sucker.
Yes.
That's for Shock.
Yes.
No.
Youth advisor.
Yes. Okay, so the yays have it, five to two, with additional affirmation from youth advisor Reyes. Okay, councillors. Are you prepared to move forward with a vote on the text as amended, or on the ordinance as amended, excuse me?
Anyone else have any comments before we do? All right, so as we did last meeting, for those of you who were here or those of you that were not here, uh, we can all just vote by voice, we can have a roll call vote, or any council member can request a paper vote. It is not, it is absolutely not a secret ballot. Our names are on here, we will vote, and the mayor will read off the name of the person and how they voted. This way, it's fair for everyone up here. For instance, if I sat in this seat and if it had already passed, I could easily vote no and say that I did not vote to increase your taxes, if indeed I would be in favor of it. So again, this is not a secret ballot, I think this is just a fair way of doing it, so I'll hand these out. Uh, it has on here your name, the date, second reading. Uh, you'll sign it along with, yes, I vote to adopt ordinance five two two nine, no, I vote not to adopt five two two nine, or I abstain. I will collect these and then hand them to the mayor to read.
You've reviewed them all also, want to make sure, oh, well, can you review them before I read them? Want to make sure that everybody knows that they're, I'm not making anything up. Thank you. All right. Uh, from Counselor Gerber, we have a yes. From Counselor Letterock, we have a yes. From Counselor Nisley, we have a no. From Counselor Peel, we have a yes. From Counselor Reed Sucker, we have a yes. Y'all, uh, yes, from Counselor Shock, we have a yes. And from Counselor Weddell, we have a yes. And from Youth Advisor Reyes, we have a yes, which is non-binding.
I confirm those votes.
Okay, so the yays have it, uh, six to one. Okay, thank you all for your careful deliberation on a really tough issue. Um, that brings us to the next item on our agenda for tonight, which is privilege of the floor. So if you are here to speak to the council on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda, um, and that has not already been discussed, and that is a topic that is germane to the work of this council. So that means something within the city limits, uh, relating to infrastructure or public safety or services that the city provides. Uh, you're welcome to come to the podium at this time, we ask that you sign in and that, uh, you're welcome.
Please state your name again, please.
Nancy Brown. My question is, now, I complained about this several years ago, Gleason Industries, uh, they allow their employees to park along the railroad tracks, and it is just one hell of a mess along there, especially from uh, Pearl Street down to Monroe. And I was told that because Gleason rents or leases the right of way from the railroad that you guys couldn't do nothing about it. I'd like to know if we could turn that around somehow. The other thing is, is why is it that the railroad gets to leave their junk lay there? My God, it's years, decades. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to offer a thought?
Hi, uh, my name's Ed Groff from, uh, two ten Carter Road. Let's write that here. First of all, I just want to thank everybody for the work that you're doing, I think this is outrageous times that we're living through, and I think it's gonna get worse. Um, but I have something that I think is maybe a little bit of hopefulness. Um, I, as a citizen, am more than happy to pay taxes and want to pay more taxes because I think what gets done with those taxes is essential for all of us to live at a quality of life and get the services that we need and desire. I'm concerned that the taxes that we're talking about recently, uh, I, as a property owner, I get maybe three hundred, I doubt it, but I don't, that to me isn't what matters. I feel like the wheel tax, uh, distributes the tax burden throughout the entire population. I think it's a move away from taxing people with greater resources and income to, um, and maybe there's equity in that, but I don't think so, I think we ought to be moving in the opposite direction. And if we can't do that as a country or as a state, then I'm wondering if the city of Goshen has a line in your budget where you would accept donations.
Yes.
I think we are moving into an era where things are gonna get a bit really critical. And I think there is a lot of affluence in this community, I'm not affluent, but I'm not poor. But I would like to know that there's a place I could give money to the city of Goshen to keep doing what it needs to be doing. And I think we can change the narrative and not just assume that all of us out here are totally against taxation. I'm not, I think we need voluntary taxation and increase it. So that's what I wanted to say.
Well, there are, uh, donation funds in virtually every department, and so we would be happy to connect you, uh, with your, where you feel those dollars would be best sent, so, uh, feel free to reach out to my office and, uh, be happy to talk with you more about that if that's something that.
Many of our parks are from generous donations from community members or some of the amenities at those parks.
Anyone else who wishes to speak during privilege of the floor to anything that's not been on today's agenda? Mr. Hoosier. Come on down. Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
I, I am a fan of Orioles, I've tried to avoid those nowadays, but. If you've ever ate an Oriole. You have to brush your teeth six or seven times to get it out. Have we ever tried to patch our roads with those? Just a thought.
Okay. Anybody else before we move to elected official reports? Moving right along, is there anybody on the council who wishes to share an update from any of your border commission meetings? Or anything, uh, germane to the work of this body?
I just wanna kind of update the council, myself, along with the mayor, deputy mayor Brinson and, uh, councilman Gerber attended a meeting last week on. Two weeks ago, a week and a half ago. On, uh, I think it was August twenty first. It was, uh, hosted by our local state representatives, and they invited, uh, Senator Thompson, the chair of the Ways and Means Committee. Um, it was, our hope was that, uh, we would find out details and explanations concerning S E A one. But I think that we left that meeting with more questions and, than answers, I think that's fair to say. Um, there were some statements put out in the newspaper about what happened at that meeting, and I would encourage you again to listen to last week's. Elkhart County Council meeting. At the eighteen minute mark, and I believe at the, just past the hour mark, uh, county councilman at large Stephen Clark gave a amazing breakdown of what did and did not happen at that meeting. And he gives it a really, really comprehensive review of. The bill of sales will say that, that our property taxpayers were sold. And the realities of what we're seeing. I would like to compliment Mayor Lipti on her. Eloquent statement to the chairman, post haste. Fix it. Fix it yesterday. Don't just think about it and talk about it for a couple of years, it does none of us any good. Again, I don't know how any of us, any city municipality, I don't know how I as a business owner would be able to think about a budget for the following year when I have zero comprehension. Of the impacts of what revenues might be coming in, so. Uh, we have our work cut out for us, I encourage everyone that's here to continue to stay engaged, come, ask questions, hear about the budget. Review the budget with us so that you and we can all become more frustrated.
You can view that on YouTube.
YouTube, yep, Elkhart County, I believe it's under the Elkhart County Commissioners, uh. Tab. Uh, I also found out recently that redevelopment commission based upon some of the new. Rule changes in S E A one redevelopment commission could very well be losing three to three point eight million dollars per year based upon rule changes. Very, very complicated, I've been asking Baker Tilly for some information, I've gotten information from Middlebury and some of the Elkhart. Uh, county officials to kinda give me some more information, so as I gather that, I'll alert you as well.
I would just piggyback on that because I, this last week I sat through two meetings, uh, Mayor Lipti spoke to different groups, one at Greencroft and one at Waterford Crossing. And they were excellent, very helpful, I had a lot of positive feedback from that, so if you're interested. I, I know your schedule's full, but, uh, if you can get in on a talk where, where Mayor Lipti talks about the impact on the city, it's well worth your time.
And I'll add one other thing, uh, councillor Gerber, you mentioned, also Stephen Clark County Council. He was wanting to set up some sort of a meeting. A public forum, town hall, I don't know what you wanna call it, or a county council meeting of some sorts. Having our state legislators come in and help explain some of these, and I would. Hope he continues to follow through on that request, and I will make sure that he knows that many of us may wanna contribute and participate with that as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Because I think it, it, it's up to us. Yes, the mayor is the voice of the city, but it's up to us as well to engage our local state legislators so that they fully understand. What they've laid in our lap. So, thank you.
I wasn't looking for a pause.
Um, I have two things, number one was, um, the touch a truck event, I've always liked taking my grandkids to that, but. You guys did, you guys did a great job again, and, uh, looked like it was well attended, and. Um, everybody was enjoying. That time at, uh, Shankland Park, so. The other one was, and I, and I think she might still be here, but I received several letters this week from. A concerned citizen who. Praised a lot of the. Uh, amenities that we have and some of the department heads and. Um, it, it was Ms. Ms. Or Mrs. Unturned Nair. And, and I appreciate receiving those because they're not. You know, letters complaining about something, they were very nice letters, and she hopes that we continue to fund. Um, these things that we can, so, um, we need to take that into consideration, which we would. But it was nice to have someone reaffirm those, so thank you very much.
Also nice to receive mail, that's not a bill.
It, it really is, actually.
Anything else?
There is something I was.
Yes.
And I'll go over there just because.
So from, from August tenth to August fourteenth, I attended the annual conference of the Indiana League of Municipal Clerks. And Treasurers and the State Board of Account School. In French Lick. And there were two days of required sessions, clerk treasurers are required to attend these sessions. And there was also good training opportunities. But one unexpected highlight were comments by Micho, Michoakka Mayor Dave Wood. And I think most people expected just the normal kind of greeting, uh, Dave Wood is the. Mayor of Michoakka, has been for twelve years, excuse me, since twenty ten. After serving twelve years on the council. He's also the president of Accelerate Indiana Municipalities, so. That is the group that represents all councils, mayors, clerk treasurers in the state of Indiana. He's also Republican, and I'm only mentioning that because of the nature of his comments. Were very similar to the comments of, um. Council President Weddell. He talked about. Senate Enrolled Act One, Senate Bill One. And the impact it's having. And he said it in the strongest terms that I've heard anyone expect, express. And again, he's the president of AIM, so his. And has been very experienced mayor, so. What he said carries some weight, I think. And he described Senate Bill One as a man-made crisis for local government finance. A crisis that threatens the variability of cities, towns across Indiana to maintain the level of service. That our residents count on services that are foundational to public trust, economic growth, and community well-being. He said in Michoakka, this will be a fifteen million dollar revenue loss, twenty percent of their general fund. And that will cause a reduction of essential services, including police, fire, streets, neighborhoods, and local economy. He said this was legislation designed to offer short-term relief, but with negative long-term consequences to communities. He called on the clerk treasurers in the most strong terms. To be knowledgeable about the impact of this and to share that with the community. To advocate and educate for changes in this legislation. And also to activate citizens, I've never heard. Mayor representatives basically say, go out in the community. And get them involved, he wrote, the fight cannot happen in the back rooms of city halls alone. We must inform and empower our residents to speak out. They need to know what's at stake, and they need to be ready to advocate with us. There is strength in numbers, and our numbers are neighbors. And also to promote practical sound solutions, so he also called for a government to be more efficient. So, he sent out this very strong call to action. And I'm giving you this to just give you a sense of what the president of AIM is saying, and the impact it's gonna have. And what he's calling on mayors, council members. And clerk treasurers to do. He says, don't be passive in this moment, be active, informed, persistent, and vocal. Don't wait for someone else to carry the banner. Pick it up and wave it high, because the truth is, there is no cavalry coming, we are it. So I just wanted to recommend that you please consider this in your deliberations.
Thank you very much, Richard. I'll just, uh, add to that, that, um, when I think about having an impact on people's lives, local government is really where that happens. And at the city level, we are the closest, uh, to the ground, uh, with people. Here in our community, and I know just how much this council cares about the well-being of people in our community. Um, and it, it has been heartening as we face. These incredibly daunting challenges ahead, when we're looking at. A potential loss of up to thirty-eight percent of our revenue that we would totally receive, but that we would typically receive from the state. Thirty-eight percent, imagine what that would do to your household budget. Um, this would not be the same city, if this fully goes into, into effect in twenty twenty-eight. As it's being phased in, Goshen will not be the same. And it's been heartening to know that the people closest on the ground. Who live with you, who work with you, who are neighbors with you, are advocating together on the city's behalf, and. Um, they're not afraid to cross party lines, to have hard discussions and say, this is what's right. And we wanna fix the formula that's been broken. And that's not about pointing fingers or casting blame, it's about standing together and fixing what needs to be fixed for the good of all here. Before we all head off the cliff together. So I just wanna say how much I appreciate working with all of you, every single person around this table. I appreciate the pushback, I appreciate the pushes forward. I appreciate the calls to be more efficient, I appreciate all of it. Um, so. I know that we can shoulder this because we can work together, and not every community can say that. Um, but I know this one can. And so I just wanna extend my gratitude to you, and thanks to all of you who showed up tonight. Um, I know this is a particularly long meeting, and I can't promise the next ones will be any shorter as we're heading into budget season. So bring snacks if you need to, uh, we won't, we won't, uh, give you a hard time if you need to bring some snacks. But, um. Uh, with that, I don't know if there's anybody else, but if not, I'll turn it over to Doug.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion from Nisley to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We.